Okay, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Bronxville Village Planning Board. I'm Michael Goldman and I'm attempting tonight to fill in for our chairman Larry Vranka, who is away today, but we have a nice turnout among the planning board and also among the community, so thank you for coming. I wanted to note, we're going to make one shift to the agenda, and I don't know if it's been changed, Christine, on the agenda that's up there, but we're going to move the proposed banner for Stein Hall at Iona up to the front and take care of that and take care of Kensington, and then we'll be getting to White Plains Road, just so you'll know the order of business. Let's start with the minutes from the March 8th, 2023 meeting. Does everyone have a copy? Has everyone had a chance to review? If there aren't any changes, would someone like to move those minutes?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have minutes. The next item on the agenda is Iona is presumably here to discuss the proposed signage for Stein Hall. And when you come to the mic, can you please identify yourself for the group?
Sure. Good evening Chair, my members of the planning board. My name is Annie Klein and I'm an associate at Dalbello, Donnell and Weingarten, Wise and Whitaker. I'm here tonight on behalf of Iona University. So this sign is an existing, Paul, I don't know if you can move the, I just want to show them the existing sign. So there's a blue sign that was there that was put up by Concordia University back in the day and...
Here's a laser pointer.
Oh, okay, okay, great, thank you. We're just seeking to replace that sign. None of the hardware needs to be changed. The sign is exactly the same size as what's theirs now, but we're changing it to the Iona University color scheme, and also so it says Iona University on it. We met with the DRC in March. They approved the sign, but at that point it said Iona College. We've now changed it to say Iona University. We met with them back in September. At the time, as you can see from here, the bottom Iona University letters were proposed to be three inches. They requested that we reduce the size, so I have here with me this evening some samples of what we submitted, what we're proposing, which is that all of the letters on the sign will be two and a half inches. So I can pass these out if you'd like to see.
We have.
We have them.
Yeah. If they were emailed, we've got them.
It doesn't need...
This one says three inches on our...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so based on the DRC's comments, we've just changed that to make it slightly smaller so that it would be more centered. That was their concern. And so that's what we're proposing.
Just one note, the memo that was attached to this, I think was an old memo, you know, from some time ago, and it had referred to banners also going on Feth Hall...
Nope.
...which hadn't been approved, so I just wanted to make sure there was no...
Absolutely not. We are only proposing switching out the sign. We were here, I think it was back in January or February, for the site plan application for Feth Hall, so those banners are no longer proposed, and this is only for the Stein Hall Conservatory sign.
Okay, do planning board members have questions about what's being proposed here?
No.
It's gonna stay Concordia Conservatory though, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
At Iona University.
Okay.
So I don't think we have more questions for you. Is anyone from Design Review here? I didn't know if someone from Design Review is gonna be here tonight. Okay, but this had a prior approval. Okay. I guess it's time to open things up for the public hearing, if anyone from the public wishes to speak about this, we want to give them their opportunity. So we opened the public meeting and hearing done, I think we're going to close the public meeting on this particular matter. Any discussion from planning board members?
No.
Does someone want to make a motion?
I move we approve the banner as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Great.
You have your banner.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is 85 Kensington Road. Is there someone here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
My name is Paulette Demofsky. I'm the architect for the owner Tracy Murray, who's here, and I'm here with my colleague Yumi Kim. I'd like to talk a little bit about contextually this project, so if we just, it's perfect to end right there. This is the existing house on 85 Kensington Road, and we're looking to seek approval for the development of an addition to this property. So this property is about 2,400 square feet overall. We're looking to do a 1,200 square foot addition to the rear and the side. This, if you slow down, go back. I just, just contextually, I want to show you that that's the house to the left, and then if you go to the next couple of slides, that's the house to the right. So our house sits in between those two buildings, those two residential buildings. So if we move to the site plan, where we can really zone in on what the addition is, that's the existing survey. The next slide is our zoning analysis and where we identify where we're doing the addition. So if you look on the upper right corner, and I think there's a... How does this work? If you look at this upper right corner, this is the existing house, and then this hatched area is where we're proposing to do the addition. The existing house is two and a half stories. We're looking to do a two and a half story addition to marry that. Some important facts about this analysis is that we are not imposing on any of the setbacks. In fact, we are decrease in existing non-conformity in the front where there's a bay window. We're actually taking that bay window out and putting a double French door that goes out to a patio. So if we go to the next slide, I'd like to just show you maybe why we're doing this addition. I do want to point out that this addition, the existing house has been neglected for over 20 years, so it's in desperate need of a renovation, repair, and an upgrade. So part of why we're doing the addition is to give them a little bit more space, give them a proper kitchen of today's family life, a little bit more open. That kitchen is right here. I don't know if we can zoom into that. So we were able to add a powder room on this floor, add a nice sized kitchen, a more open plan, a little bigger entryway. The next slide will show you how we're increasing the number of bedrooms from three to five. We have a proper master bedroom with a bathroom, a hall bathroom, two bedrooms, and then an attic space. One thing about this, if we move to the elevations, that's really important to note, is that we're not increasing the height of this building at all. We're aligning with the existing ridge, and we're creating, I think, just much nicer curb appeal. So this is the entry, this is the addition. We're keeping in that Tudor style with the steep slopes. We added a dormer in the front, and we're refinishing all the exterior finishes. So we do have a rendering of what this looks like. This is our rendering of what we're anticipating this look like at the end of the day, which I think is a vast improvement from what's there currently.
This is the front elevation?
Yes.
Is there also rear elevation?
You know, we didn't do a rear rendering, but we do have an elevation on those prior slides of a two-dimensional rendering of what that looks like. So the rear is here.
Uh huh.
So this is the rear steep peaks.
And that faces the railroad tracks?
Yes, yes. And then this is a small little deck out the side. So I think you might have added the landscape into this. So we've already gotten, submitted our stormwater management, which is in the package, so we hired a civil engineer to take care of the stormwater management. And we've, the owner has retained a landscape architect to take care of just the landscaping around the property, create some buffers with the neighbors, and to just uplift the look of the front elevation of the house.
Is that, Christine, is that what we got here?
Yes, that's it. I think, I think you added it right. It's a little sideways, so that's okay. So this is the, this is the front, I don't know if you can rotate that, but this is the front of the house. This is the walkway. This is that small patio that we're proposing in the front. And this is all new landscaping proposed around this area. These are new trees that are proposed, and if you scroll down to the bottom of this page, you can see some of the plantings that are being proposed at that location.
Is the driveway to the right or left as you face the house?
The driveway, there's a right of way on the left, right here. And then the driveway is...
Ah, I get it.
Where is it?
Yeah. So it's a shared driveway?
This one, oh, I'm sorry. I'm all sideways. It's right here.
Yep.
This is a shared driveway.
Understood.
Sorry about that.
Mm-hmm.
So I could talk about this for hours. I love this project. I feel like it really is such an improvement to the property, but if you have any questions...
I'll start, and I'm sure other folks may have things, but the reason you're here is that it's a percentage increase to the property that's greater than, you know, what's permitted as of right in the code, and so we always ask the question, is all the houses around town sort of upsize? Is this the ideal, you know, amount? Was it necessary to go over the, I think, 30% that is sort of the portion where you don't have to come to us for a project like this? If you could just speak to that.
Yeah, you know, we did look at a lot of different options, but given the existing footprint, given where the plumbing was, the electrical was, I mean, a lot of that is being, is all new and updated, but given the existing parameter of the house, the best way to add on to this house and gain the extra space, all the required circulation, was increase that footprint and to increase that square footage. I think today's families are a little bit bigger and they want some space. They have extended families that might come to stay with them, so we wanted to really have enough bedrooms, enough, just make it worth it for them to invest in this home.
Well, before we get to Paul, maybe we can see if folks here have other questions for you.
There's no garage on this house, right?
No.
There are plenty of houses in our town that don't have...
Well, nobody uses them anyways.
Or for their cars.
Or sports equipment.
Some of us live in those houses.
Yeah.
And for that driveway, would the, I guess no one's lived there in 20 years, but was the idea that the owners of this home would use that driveway for parking, or is that the next, the neighbors to the left that primarily use that driveway and parking space?
Well, we haven't lived there yet. It's unlivable, so I don't know the intention.
You did buy a way to touch for that part, and there's an easement on it.
That permits to park, I understand.
Right.
It's shared?
It is shared.
So somebody has an easement and somebody owns it, okay.
Yeah, that came up in the DRC notes.
Yeah.
And in December, this was disapproved because it was waiting for a site plan approval? Is that, what was the reason? There's a memo here.
I don't think...
No?
Oh, well, it was, it was recommended to come to the planning board because we were over the floor area ratio.
30%.
Yes, yes.
Paul can't do it as of right.
So this is, you have to come to us?
Right.
Okay.
Right. That recommended us to come to this.
And here you are.
Yes.
And what's the plan for the material for the surface and color palette? Is that what the rendering has, or are you still evaluating colors?
We're evaluating colors, but I think we're going with more of a neutral palette with stucco.
Stucco.
Which fits into the neighborhood.
Yes, yes. That Tudor style we're trying to maintain. So it's very contextual.
Any other questions, or maybe we can hear from Paul if he has any perspectives on this?
I think, like, it's been spoken about, there, you know, it is an improvement on the conditions there. They do have a drainage plan that has been reviewed by our consultant, and that all seems to be in order and, you know, according to our requirements, so I don't have any other comments.
Okay. Any questions for Paul before we go to next steps? Okay, so maybe we can open it up for the public to speak. Presumably the neighbors have been noticed about this project, and if they have anything to say, or anyone else does, they're welcome to speak up. So we've opened the public meeting, yes?
Hi, so I'm Victor Aviles, I'm the 87 Kensington owner.
Yep.
So I'm directly next to the...
Which, as you face, are you to the right?
If you're facing the house, I'm to the right.
Got it.
Yeah. It's a little small, sunken down house, yeah.
Is there an image we can...
The one right in front of that car in the back?
It's the attached one or the, so what?
The one on the left with the wreath?
Got it.
That's it.
That's you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So yeah, I have no issues with this. The only thing I wonder is, because I'm not a water mitigation expert, is the plan, and it looks, it looks fine, you know, I read through it, but I can only understand so much. It's not gonna affect our property, nothing. It seems like it's designed to prevent that from happening, correct?
The stormwater.
Yes. So, I mean, that was my only concern, because the land is very, the soil's very wet in that part of town, so I've had some water kind of coming up through the floor in the basement and stuff like that, especially with the last event that we had, it was, it's pretty wild. So as long as that's kind of mitigated, I have no concerns, and I agree that it's a step up. You know, the kids in the neighborhood called it the haunted house for a while. Yeah, so I'm happy to see this happening, you know, honestly. And just, I know this is a planning meeting, it's not a design meeting, but like, if there's, again, if there's any stonework that's gonna be done in the entrance, you know, any pillars being put up, or any, you know, pavers, you know, anything like that, I would, you know, appreciate coordinating, just to complement each other's sort of front portion. But that's it, that's my only two comments. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Anyone else with comments? Yep, please.
Hi, my name's John McDonald. This is my first planning board meeting. I'm the neighbor on the other side. If you could show my house.
Yeah, Paul, if you could pull up the other...
So as you're facing the property that we're talking about, I'm on the left. There we go. So on this particular townhouse, I'm the unit on the right-hand side.
Got it.
There was some discussion earlier about the driveway, that's my driveway. They have an easement to reach their backyard. I agree with Victor, the design seems to blend in, it seems to be kind of hidden away. I think that fits in beautifully with what's already there and is an improvement. My only concern is the driveway. I know that the plans, right now, there's a 20-yard dumpster in the back there, taking out plaster partitions and, you know, as would be expected from a 20-year-old house, it needs to be renovated. I'm just concerned with the wear and tear on my driveway, starting to see it already, and if I look at the plans, I'm a structural engineer, so I see that they're calling for stormwater retention, which I think is great, but they're gonna need an excavator to get back there to dig that hole. The addition will have a full-size basement underneath it, so all the soil from the basement and the stormwater detention will have to be hauled out, dump trucks up that driveway. Going back is cast-in-place concrete walls for the basement, so that'll be, you know, concrete trucks going down. I have talked offline with the developer, and they assure me that, you know, whatever damage is done, they will take care of. And I guess that's, you know, the insurance that we have, that will be, you know, for whatever. It's not a brand-new driveway, don't get me wrong, I just don't want to get to the end of its useful life a lot quicker than we have to.
Yeah, a question while you're there for Paul, does a construction plan of this type require that the contractor restore the, you know, driveway they're using to its present condition? Because I can, I can see the issue that could arise if it's damaged along the way, and there's no formal agreement as to what then happens.
Yeah. I mean, ordinarily, I wouldn't be addressing something like that, it would be between the two homeowners. You know, you could possibly have a discussion about that and make it a condition, I suppose, but it seems like it's fairly amicable.
Would the owner want to say anything about this?
John and I had a discussion on the phone earlier today, and to what we are speaking to now, I think the driveway is in pretty bad state already.
You might need to go to the mic and introduce yourself, please. Thank you. That's his mic.
Doesn't like to share.
No.
So John and I spoke today, and I think, I think we were on the same page as far as what, you know, it's not a great driveway at the moment. We will be bringing an excavator back, but it's a one-drop-and-one-pickup situation. I guaranteed him that if we do damage the driveway, and because it's old, I have no doubt that there will be, you know, more damage than if it was a brand-new driveway, but I'm happy to repair where we damage, and I'm happy to also seal it. But our access, I do have a question for you, John. Our access is this one straight line, straight down.
Well, the easement, yeah, straight down, and then it's a very unnatural property, completely where you park.
Yeah, it's a parking spot.
Right.
Well, are you, are you looking for repair? You're not looking for repair, because the back of it is pretty...
I'm just anticipating what could happen. I mean, right now, I don't know if you, you said you were gonna stop by?
I did.
I mean, if you have a chance, and you saw what I was talking about on the phone, right?
Yeah.
The damage already, and so I'm just anticipating the coming damage, because it will be coming at all.
Right.
And just trying to, just want to deal with it upfront, so at the end of the day, the project's done, there's no problem.
Well, I'd like to just work with the neighbor on, I mean, I'd like to work with you on it. Are you okay with that?
As long as he's good with it, I think we will be. But it's good to get these things out before a project starts, there's no misunderstanding, so it's really helpful to have all the neighbors here tonight, so thank you for that.
That's all I had to say.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question for Paul. In the village, if a house does do a bunch of construction and the street in front of it is damaged, which I've seen before, what are, what are the villages' rules on that, on what the homeowner's obligation is versus the village obligation?
Generally, if you're working in the street or you cause damage, that would be in the purview of a DPW, and then they would, you know, they, if you have a permit for working in the street, there would be a bond that you would ordinarily post before getting a permit for that, but, you know, it would be through DPW, and, you know, if it's truly from construction activity, then, you know, a CO probably would be subject to a condition that that be rectified.
Okay, if there isn't anyone else from the public, why don't we close the public meeting? Thanks. I'm sorry, is there still? Then it's open.
Hi, everyone. I'm Dr. Chrysanti, and I live on Oval Court, which is, I don't know if you're familiar.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
There was a picture of it a few seconds ago, in one direction or another.
Where it's at.
There you go.
Okay. So my only concern, I mean, it's just swapping a house for a bigger house. My only concern would be congestion, traffic, parking. There's a stop sign right in front of this property. The turn from Avon to Kensington is pretty tight. The street is not very wide, and we've had problems of other people parking on Oval, which is considered our driveway, is not a...
It's private property, right?
Right, exactly. So that's my only concern, you know, bigger house, more people, more cars, kids turning 16, et cetera, so...
So not just the construction, but sort of the afterlife of the, of the house as it gets larger?
Like you mentioned, Mr. Hayden, no garage, so, you know, maybe is that taken into consideration to change anything, or, I'm not sure. It's three-hour parking on Kensington only, so how are they gonna do that big house with only one spot at the end of the driveway?
That is a question, I think, for the homeowner, is there only one spot?
There is one spot at the back. I don't know, but we have that, that area where we could do two spots. I just don't, I haven't pursued that yet.
That would be a future consideration.
Yeah, there's a special one to do two spots back there.
I have the same issue, by the way, on the record. We have one...
Could you go to the mic? Thanks.
We have one, a one-car garage in the back of our house, which is accessible through a really long shared driveway that kind of intersects all of those connected townhouses, and we have an easement, just like you guys, to get into the garage, but it's a one-car garage, and, you know, I didn't think about it when I, too much when I first got the house, I was so excited, you know, but it's, it's one car, now my kids are, they both play travel hockey, so my life is over.
Yeah.
You know, 13 and seven.
You like getting up at 4:00 AM?
I love it, yeah, it's the best, on Saturdays, and, yeah. So it's an issue for us too, like that, the parking scenario, but, you know, we're, you know, trying to work it, work through it.
It's a universal issue in Bronxville. Most of these homes were built before cars were important, you know, and it's more rare for it to not be an issue than to be an issue. So for the neighbor who just raised that question, do you have any response to that? Or, if you wouldn't mind going to the mic, yeah? Or if you have nothing, then?
I mean, what apartment's garage, no garage, and we could consider it as an empty spot, I mean, it might be very beneficial under construction. That's why we're, that's why we're down, I mean, if I'm concerned, we look at that.
But you have the land to potentially do that in the future if it becomes an issue?
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Could you do that, though, with the, would that go right in the backyard that has grass, though? You'd have a lot, you'd be reducing a lot of open space.
There's a section of the grass back there, and, you know, the train tracks are on back there, and we'll see a lot of enjoyment in that area.
Can you look at the...
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
So I just, I don't, I'm happy to cut into the back lawn. I think it might be more beneficial, you know, to the community to do two parking spots back there. We already have one existing, but we could move, we could do another one.
Where is the driveway on this map? Is it right on...
To the left.
To the right.
To the left.
It's to the left.
To the left.
To the right.
This is the shared driveway. And so where is your parking spot, the existing?
So it's not, is it clear on that plan?
Is it here?
Presumably it's top right. Yeah.
Oh, oh, sorry, yes, thank you. What is this thing?
The red light.
You gotta help me.
Top left.
Yeah, it's right there.
So at the end of the driveway, that corner is yours?
So if you move that to the right, we could potentially do another parking lot, parking space right there.
Yeah, in terms of minimizing the amount of grass that's being lost, though, you know, I think if you did that, the neighbor would be happier, but we'd be less happy, you know, so here we are.
It's hard, this is a difficult situation.
And I think compounding it...
I mean, you're so close, sorry, I'm gonna cut you off. You're so close to the train, I would assume people take the train, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Until their teenagers play travel hockey, that's true, yeah.
Waste gas, yes. You know, I'm happy to look at it, but I don't, I don't know what the right solution is for that.
Paul, we don't really have a position on this, right? I mean, this is...
No, no, I believe the one parking space is what's required.
And I think what's unique as well is in front of the house is a fire lane that you can't actually park in front of your house, and so you end up always being in front of someone else. And so you end up always being in front of someone else's house, which adds, again, spreading more cars away from their house into the rest of the neighborhood.
In fairness, the neighbors, it sounds like, have had 20 years of benefit of no parking there. And I think that party may be over, you know?
I think it's 28 years. Sorry, I just, that's what I've heard.
We sort of get the point. Anyone else for the public meeting before we close the public meeting, please?
Actually, I do, but it's more compounding. So, hi, my name is Ricardo. I live on 99 Kensington, one of the townhouses a little bit further from Victor.
Further north.
Further north, yes. On, yeah, on my way to Tuckahoe side. So my main concern, I love the idea of the haunted house being actually redone. My son, I have a seven-year-old that comes home every single day, and it's like I saw somebody in there. So I'm just like, ah, this is cool. My main concern is that it's the parking, right? Parking in front of the house, construction's going to be happening. Right now, there's a three-hour parking limit that never gets enforced. So my concern is, how is this going to get portrayed to everybody else, like commuters that we do get on a daily basis that leave their cars there eight hours of a day? And then for all the other houses that only have a one parking, one-car garage, if they want to park in front of their house, it's actually a little bit hard right now. So with construction and sending this different view of anybody can start parking in front, because construction's going to happen, they're going to have to park somewhere. Like, how is that going to affect the community? Especially since it's now, like, it's a very small area in which kids just run around. And that's my worry, because there's no speed bumps or anything like that. So randomly, we do get speedsters going back and forth. But with the construction and lack of parking and commuters and all that, I wonder how is this going to affect the community in that sense? I mean, I'm not against it. I'm just trying to portray what's going to happen further down the road.
Paul, is there anything DPW does when there's a project like this going on in a tight space? Or is there any suggestion we can make to them that they do something in this circumstance?
What we have offered is if there are excess trucks or cars that don't need to be there, they can park behind the Village Hall here, something to that effect. You know, certainly, they can't block it so that a fire truck can't get through.
It is a tight little space down there.
Yeah, yeah.
You'll run into the issue at some point, because recycling goes in front of the houses as well. It's not in the backyard like in other houses, or even trash pickup happens in the back, but...
There's parking on only one side of the street there.
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
But then it's a three-hour parking rule. But it never gets enforced, so technically, it's either half-full most of the time, or sometimes, if you're lucky, it's empty.
And several spots on Avon, I would say, to deliver.
And several spots on Avon, yeah.
And they don't want them parking in Oval Court, apparently, so...understood. Understood. Thank you. Anyone else for the public meeting? Okay, thanks, everyone. Let's close the public meeting and put it up for discussion. Who would like to start?
It sure looks like an improvement to the...at least aesthetically, to the neighborhood. Adding another occupant is going to jam it up even more, but I think can't keep houses vacant just to preserve parking spaces.
I would agree. I think it's a big improvement. And I know the house well, a lot of friends down there. Parking is always an issue. Maybe, you know, it's not our job, but I'm sure we could ask the town police guys to go...the police people to go down and take a look at that once in a while. When they do, they're walking around to enforce the three hours. Or you guys can call the police station as well and say, please come down and do that. I don't know. It's not our job to do that, but I think as far as the project goes, I'm in favor of it.
And I agree that the project looks great. The renderings are beautiful, and the landscape looks nice.
Same.
I think with our primary remit being the renovation and improvement of the home, I think the designs and the concept behind that all make a ton of sense. I think what we are hearing from the public, though, is the logistics and the path to achieve that. There are a lot of concerns around. Unfortunately, I don't think that is in our remit. But what I would recommend, hopefully, is what we're starting to see here, that the architect and the construction team and the current owner find a way to work with the neighbors, because that will facilitate. I think what we've seen before sometimes is, with respect to construction teams, that when the truck doesn't need to be there, or the cars, those people that drive there can park, you know, down the street. Yes, they're going to have to walk a little bit further, but if they can alleviate some of that congestion by parking not on Kensington, I think I've seen that work in places where...close to where I live as a solution. And then having a clear agreement with the owner of the driveway and that easement, because as I experienced on Elm Rock, there was construction, and it was destroyed. And I could see that there will be some work done, and I think it's just easier if you can also come to an agreement on that. That will help smooth relations going forward as well. So that's all I recommend.
Especially since you do need access to his driveway. So, it's good to have coordination, and in general, I think, over-communication, right, is what we're all talking about, and that makes for... Any other discussion? All right, does someone want to make a motion?
A move, we approve the plans as presented.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you have your approval. Good luck.
Good luck.
Okay. We'll give them a minute as they clear out, and then the next item on the agenda will be 205 White Plains Road. Okay, so you're here from the applicant?
Yes. Good evening, good evening, board members. My name is Adama Myarano from Community Designs and Engineering, and we are obviously proposing a new residence at 205 White Plains Road.
Are you the architect, or...
Yes. And, well, my brother's the engineer, but he's not here. So basically, what's unique about this property, it's situated in a rez A district in Bronxville. It's an oversized lot. So what's permitted in that size district is a 12,000-square-foot lot, and we're around 17,700 square feet. But as you can see, that red line that cuts across the property, a portion of the property is obviously situated in Bronxville, and that's around 7,400 or so square feet. And then the back of the home is really situated in the Tuckahoe zoning district, and that area is around 10,295 square feet. Again, it's a corner lot. The right side is White Plains Road, and down what we're facing is Hobart Street. So, the existing home, it was formerly used by Concordia College. Recently, it has been vacant for a number of years. It's a little bit hard to see, but the gray outline is where the existing home sort of footprint is now. Those are the steps to it. So in the initial site planning of the home, the applicant really is trying to take as much advantage of the site as far as the yards and use of enjoyment of, you know, the kids living in the home and, you know, what they could have to play. So, we decided to situate, obviously, the most ideal place is having the house front on Hobart Street, no, the house front on Hobart Street, and that will allow them to have a large side yard to the left, and then a rear yard as well to occupy. And given that, you know, really, safety concerns because of White Plains Road being so busy as it is, what we did was situate the driveway on the right-hand side. Right now, existing, there is a curb cut and a driveway that goes to a detached garage, which is back here. Obviously, we're proposing to remove everything entirely, the impervious surfaces and the dwelling and the detached garage. And now our new curb cut will be on the right-hand side. There'll be an area to turn around, and the garages will face White Plains Road. And then there's a landscape, you know, sort of buffer here from the driveway and turnaround area facing, basically, White Plains Road.
If I could jump in for one sec, before we get further into the site plan for the proposed new house, what you're proposing here is to demolish, you know, a 19th-century house that's on the site. So could you speak to that decision?
So, I'm sorry. Basically, you know, given that the home is in dire need of structural updates, major renovations, again, it has been vacant for a number of years. And also, throughout the years, so much of the character of the home, given that it's gone through...maybe if you want to switch to the pictures, I guess, sort of help...oh, well, no, it's on the...on this sheet, the...sort of there. But there was some additions done to the house, which are totally out of character of the home as well.
It would be good, Paul, is there any way you could pull up an image of the front of the house facing White Plains Road?
So, yeah, right here is...it's on this sheet.
Yeah, but...
Oh, the video can't...
I don't know if you have it. There's a real estate listing that has it, but, yeah. So that's the front that faces White Plains Road, which, you know, at least looks to some of us like it has a lot of its original character. So, again, you know, the history of the house is something we're going to be considering, and I just wanted to give you a chance to speak to it.
Yeah, so the...basically, the overall functional layout of the home is one thing that's big as well. Obviously, new homeowners want more of open concept, garages for parking, and this, you know, and our proposed design will give them all of that. Obviously, I mean, really, the size and sort of aesthetics of this home, there's really nothing in the immediate area that sort of looks like this, and it's sort of, I would say, more so out of play. You know, a lot of the homes in the area are very smaller and very undersized, and sort of our proposed home is actually smaller than this home by overall scale, coverage, and all of that. But it has the amenities of what, you know, a new family is sort of looking for in a, you know, a new house. But with, you know, yes, there's character there, but really, the renovations that have gone through with the vinyl siding and all that stuff, there's...has sort of, you know, I'm sure it looked a lot different years, years ago.
Any other questions on the history before we let him get back to presenting the proposed new?
When was the last time it was used? And are there structural issues with the home?
Yes, so being that it was vacant for so...I don't know...you know how long it's been basically vacant for? Four, five years? Four years. It hasn't been occupied in four years. Before that, it was occupied by, I guess, you know, dorm...you know, kids at the school, and I guess, you know, not really a big upkeep, you know, for sure, in the house, and going through winters and summers and all that. So obviously, everything would have to be stripped, and then sagging floors, all of that stuff. Once it's stripped, then we see how much really, you know, is going on with the structure of the home when it, you know, does sit like that. And the additions are, you know, sort of on the back of it, those kind of square box additions that they did over the years. Doesn't seem like it's original to the house, for sure.
Well, there were definitely additions in the rear, but the front of the house looks...
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's, yeah. The composition of it probably is definitely original.
Any other questions, or should we let him keep going with the proposed new house?
Fire escape, maybe, is definitely...
Right. That may not have been 1897, we understand. Okay, maybe, Paul, we could go back to his plan and let him keep going.
And when was the house constructed?
1897.
I don't know, yeah, well, really, just to get into, I guess, the benefits of the overall site planning, it comes to stormwater mitigation. So right now, the existing home has absolutely no known stormwater mitigation. If you sort of walk the property, all the leaders sort of go out into the grass. I mean, it's a very large, you know, structure. All the leaders go into the grass area, making their way to the driveway into the streets. Obviously, the proposed home will have 100% of the created impervious areas will have stormwater mitigation on site that we have submitted to the town consulting engineer. We did do percolation tests, and there are suitable soils for this whole system. Really, the system will be placed on the, again, right-hand side of the property towards White Plains Road. We did submit revisions to our plan to the town consulting engineer from their latest comments, which are, you know, sort of, there's a group of units here. The shading colors just sort of dictates what areas are captured in the back units and what areas are captured in the front units. Yeah, and just really, you know, it's a...obviously, the new design of Center Hall Colonial, the characteristics and materials used throughout are still with keeping in the, you know, sort of neighborhood, and not in this package that you have. But, you know, what we did was sort of show some pictures of the immediate area and corner lots, and what is happening in the neighborhood. One thing that's sort of, I think it's two...this house here, it's, I think, like, three houses down on the...facing White Plains Road shares probably the most characteristics of our home, with the white siding, black shutters, that Center Hall sort of colonial look. This house, which is sort of interesting, is a new house that's being built on White Plains Road, but what they did was turn it and face it, I think it's Gifford Street, and similar to sort of art design concept. Again, it's...the home is facing on the less busy street, and the garages are on the right-hand side.
Yeah, so one of the effects of turning the house is, correct me, but I think the top-right elevation is what would be facing White Plains Road?
Would it be facing...
Is that correct? That's a very different vision from the street than what the current house presents to White Plains Road.
Yes, totally. But within keeping of the character of the neighborhood, when you sort of go there, a lot of corner conditions have very similar situation where, you know, this home here, here, the home on the right as well, across the street, same sort of thing. It's facing on the less busy street and not White Plains Road. And there'll be, obviously, mature planting. We did go to the review committee last week, and yes, their one comment was to...and we have a landscape architect on board to show a complete new landscape plan, to show how visually White Plains Road will be treated with screening and mature trees to sort of, you know, match what is sort of going on with other properties that, again, have this sort of corner lot condition.
Questions for the applicant before we get to Paul?
So, is that three garage bays, or is it two?
It's really two. So this is a double bay, and this is a single bay.
Well, you could fit three cars in there.
Three cars in there you could fit. And, you know, we sort of tried to...obviously, the back is sort of the back, but we tried to give the right side some composition with gables and centering the windows up with the garage door, give some accent brackets.
The driveway is wide enough that you can pull cars sideways into the...
Exactly, exactly. So you could pull in, back out, and then go forward. And then, you know, the driveway still has enough room where cars are not going to be stopped, and you can't sort of pull out. It's not like right up to, you know, sort of White Plains Road.
And so lot is so large, they're able to have that large driveway and yet stay within the ratios that you're supposed to.
Exactly.
I understand.
And what's the most ideal situation is, like I said in the beginning, having that usable...because the lot is so large, having that usable side yard and backyard, you know, somewhat, but very, you know, a little bit narrow, but the left-hand side is the most, you know, enjoyable and usable open space that they have. Really, just to very quickly just go over numbers, so give a little context of what we're proposing, what's existing. The existing coverage of the existing dwelling is 3,600 square feet, and the detached garage is 514 square feet. Our proposed home is only 2,600 square feet, so obviously, the footprint and everything, what we're proposing is a lot less than what's there. Impervious area, as mentioned, that really doesn't have any stormwater mitigation, is around 5,000, 5,500 square feet. And our proposed total coverage is 4,500 square feet, so about 1,000 square feet less on that as well. So kind of how, you know, again, that area is a lot smaller homes and smaller properties right in the immediate area. Yes.
Do the plans have the height of the second...of the building versus what is existing? Because I know it's a pretty tall...
I can provide that, yes, for sure. The existing home is much taller than ours. I think we're around 29 feet from the first floor to the ridge. I think if you go to another one, should we have the overall, maybe the front, go down? Sorry. Yeah, right there to the left. On the site plan, it has the spot elevations exactly how tall the house is.
But the existing structure undoubtedly had high ceilings, and so...
Right, but that's what I was asking, you know, how tall...you don't know how the difference...
What was the size of the original...what's the size, the square foot of the existing home?
I just have the footprint, 5,200 square feet.
And you're proposing how big total?
Forty-something, I think, 4,000-something. It's in the...if you look at the zoning chart on the first page, right here...oh, sorry, Christine, go back, right here on the right. Right there, it should have the...oh, you're not doing it. Somebody else is. Oh, sorry. Oh, Paul's doing it, sorry, Paul. So, yeah... So forty-six hundred square.
All within, you know, the ratios that are.
Yeah, and then also, obviously, uh, Bronxville-Tuckahoe, we submitted, and they did a very quick preliminary zoning, and everything is, you know.
Right, the, the reason you're here at the planning board is more because you're proposing to demolish the house and because it's a new house, not because it's outside of code.
Of course, yeah, yeah, yeah. But, yes, we are keeping it within zoning limitations.
This isn't horribly relevant, just, I'm curious, whoever ends up living here, can they send their kids to either school, school, um, system?
My, my understanding, someone can correct me, is when you buy the home, you choose who you're going to pay, which property taxes you're going to pay. And when you choose that, that determines the school.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. There are a number of these properties.
Yeah, I'm sure there are.
Yeah, there's some that, like, are really a corner.
Yeah, you make a choice and you live with it. And the taxes are different. Other questions before we get to Paul? And we may have more after we speak to Paul, I have a feeling. But why don't we give, uh, Paul a chance to, uh, speak to aspects that we should be aware of?
Yes, so, um, it, it is before your board because of three-ten-twenty-six D, because they're putting in a new house. Uh, as far as zoning is concerned, uh, they comply. Uh, it is a, a little bit interesting in that it is partially in Tuckahoe and partially in Bronxville. I did speak with the building inspector, Bill Williams, and, uh, that, that side of the, of the line, they can build as of right. And he preferred that, uh, they get approval from Bronxville first before he would entertain, uh, even a, an application. But describing, and looking this over, he felt that, you know, it was compliant, and as it's shown on that zoning chart, it, you know, it, it all complies in that way, so.
Understood, so I think, you know, we had gotten the minutes from the design review, um, meeting about this. And I know there were, um, some folks who had some things to say at design review about this. So similarly, it seems like we may have some folks in the audience who would like to, um, be able to speak to this application. So why don't we open up the public meeting and give them a chance? Who would like to step up to the mic? Marilyn?
I actually hadn't thought, my colleague, I see back here, Ray, hadn't seen, and then, uh, hopefully, some of you will speak also. Hadn't planned to, but I would like to speak to its historic.
If you can just identify yourself, many of us know you, but.
My name is Marilyn Hill. I am the co-founder of the Bronxville Historical Conservancy that was born out of our hundred and twenty-five year ago, um, when we celebrated the hundredth anniversary of the village of Bronxville. And this is my colleague, who has also been a co-chair of the conservancy, and Ray Gesell-Brock, who is our historian for the village of Bronxville. I would like to speak to its aesthetic, its preservation value, uh, the history, what, what it represents for us, for the community, in terms of it, the era in which it was created. The lovely thing about Bronxville, and people move here for these things, is our lovely homes, the community, the values, and the schools. And this village was created as our own village, and Tuckahoe followed us shortly thereafter, and we shared some of this history. As a, come in the eighteen nineties, late nineties, as you pointed out, up through the first fifteen years of the village. This, I think, corridor represented the aspirations of our new village. And you said there's no comparable home, but you just showed Stein Hall, which I call Madame Carmody's home from the eight thirties, a fashion woman who represented us in this community at the eighteen ninety-three, uh, celebration in Chicago, where women were represented for the first time in something like this. She lived on that, raised her children there. Now it represent a musical center for this community. And if you saw that picture, it's reminiscent of this same period. I'd like to also point out, we work hand in glove with the village of Bronxville on projects, saving the yellow brick roads. Uh, we have brought artists back to Bronxville. This room is filled with part of the collection of the Bronxville Historical Conservancy painters and artists. And if you have a chance, there's a little tiny painting right over here to the left of the screen, and it's right in front of the house, just about. It's the trolley that used to run down White Plains Road, and traffic went down there, and we have that painting of that that was taken sort of between Concordia and that particular house. I have to say, it's a beautiful home on the outside. I've been outside and I've been inside. The inside's not so great. Uh, it has been modified, obviously, for people to live in it as students. And then there's this addenda, addition on the back that could easily be demolished, and it wouldn't hurt the value. But to take this particular facade and destroy it, turn it where we're going to be looking.
We lost her mic for a second.
I'm sorry. I would, you will be looking at a garage instead of this lovely facade if that is torn down. I went over there with Elizabeth Branca, who was trying to help Concordia keep this particular building, or Iona, I should say. And we looked at the inside because we were hoping to keep the Jaeger collection here in the community, which was a valuable collection that George Jaeger left us, uh, to see would it be suitable if we could use it there, make this a public building. We were not able to pull something like that off, and so we lost the collection to the university club, who value it. I've also been there recently. I was told it was already demolished by Monday, so I went over there to see. Fortunately, it wasn't, but neighbors, two neighbors were out in the yard, they're looking at it. They are sad about it, they are concerned what will happen with drainage, that sort of thing. I've also spoken with historical historians of Eastchester who also care about it. We look at it as, at that common period, you were building schools, we had the Massey School, and Brantwood Hall were a couple of blocks just from Concordia, who came there in nineteen oh eight. These schools were nineteen oh nine, then you get nineteen ten. It's an educational corridor. It, as I say, it represented some of the best of Bronxville and what we really wanted this community and Tuckahoe, the same, to represent. They would love to see the facade of the house stay, and I do know from working, uh, in Charleston with preservation there, that they don't let you tear down the facade. But you can redo the inside and the interior. I think, I would assume our engineers and architects could do the inside of this to make it what it ought to be, to be a modern house that somebody wants to live in, but would lovely to be able to keep the facade as it is now and have that be what faces White Plains. I don't know if I can, if you would like to say anything more about it? Or, Dave, do you have comments? Okay, and I'm happy, my husband does tell me that he's on the tax assessment review board or something like that. Is that what it's called, John? That, that you can go, you have to decide, what'd you say about the taxes?
No, the taxes, actually, a lot of cases, we get more specific. If you have the split between Tuckahoe and Bronxville, we get different evaluations, and we have to sort of sort that out. Make you pay taxes in both jurisdictions.
Oh, both, okay, thank you. Yeah, so we're learning something.
If I could answer, we've lived here forty-seven years, we've worked to preserve as much as we could of Bronxville. Uh, we'd love to see it look like it is today and continue going, but also bring what's new in here that's helpful. But if there's any way, I don't know all the rules and regulations, that we could save that facade, it would be wonderful.
Yeah, just one question, you know, my impression, looking through that hundredth anniversary book that the conservancy was involved in, it seemed that there were very few structures from the nineteenth century along, in general, the White Plains Road corridor. If you think of that as several blocks on each side of White Plains Road going north, south, but I'm not the pro. Is that, is that your view that there are very few?
Obviously, we have the house, the, uh, early nineteenth century, what we call the, um, how, um, the house that's preserved by the three-thirty-nine Confield Road. Help me with that.
The one on the corner?
Where Bob Riggs lived, but it's not the, it belonged to, um, the, pardon? Yes, that's, but it's not his historic name. Uh, it's the Abijah Morgan House. And Abijah Morgan and Masterton were people who developed the Tuckahoe quarry. And those two houses, plus the sons who lived in there, that, in fact, the school, one of the schools is one of the sons' house. These people, that was the early White Plains corridor. Then we added this group at the turn of the century, who were, again, as I said, the aspirations for Bronxville. These two houses came out of that period that you've seen tonight on here. They represent that part of our history. We've tried to save the, the big stone arches that you enter, uh, as you enter into Avon Road from both Sagamore and Avon. We've tried to preserve that, put the lamps back, wonderful working with the village on that. We've done the yellow brick roads, your road signs, we have those redone, so they're reminiscent of what this place was back then. And then we're looking at a brick sidewalk project with you now. What we are trying to do is preserve some of the best of our history, but make it work for people who need to use these things now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a few questions before you step off, though. In Bronxville, have there been examples of other historical homes that have been vacant? And, and, um, you've pres, you've preserved to find a developer to redevelop those homes and not destroy them?
Our last, um, historical award that we gave right before COVID was to a farmhouse that was on Elm Rock Road. And that house was the first, uh, one of the first presidents, we called the mayor before that, lived in that house. And it was built in about eighteen, I mean, nineteen twelve. The house was burned. Well, that's where, um, our commissioner of football was raised in that house, as have other people. Um, the king of Morocco bought the house for a little while, but it had a massive fire, was totally destroyed inside and a good bit of the outside. And the Simons insisted on putting it back just like it had been so that they could preserve the interior. There was enough of the exterior left that you could see what the historic home was, and the materials were still the same, including the, what do you call, the bar where you tie up your horses? So that was preserved, but the interior was done, but they also wanted it to look like it had been. Now, I'm not claiming you should keep the interior always, because I'm for kitchens and bathrooms to be a little more modern. But I think you could keep this facade, keep the exterior, and perhaps give us a modern interior.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else from the public who would like to have a chance to speak? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Edward Powers, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak to here tonight. And I speak in opposition to the demolition of the Fulling House. I live at six McKinley Street, which is in Bronxville, and also shares a property with Tuckahoe. And actually, on the right side of that photo, I share a common boundary with the Fulling property, okay? That goes all the way back to the garage, and it's where my line is. I also own another property in Bronxville, which is at Thirteen Willow Circle. And, uh, that I purchased in nineteen seventy-two, when I was honorably discharged from the Army as a major, Vietnam hero. Not a long time, but it's enough, I think, okay? Over fifty years. The, uh, house that I'm in at six McKinley, I purchased that house from, in two thousand and three, from Elizabeth Betzleki. She grew up in that house, okay? Her fowling, family knew the Fullings, the owner of two oh five, so knew this family. And she also wrote a beautiful chapter on the history of Bronxville, on the Gifford Park area. And as you know, this is in Gifford Park, which is an area that is both Tuckahoe and Bronxville. Beautiful chapter. I might add that when they were developing the property that I have, which are empty lots next to my property, uh, when they were digging up and planting fruit trees and other things, they found a cannonball. And the cannonball is a British cannonball that goes back to the American Revolutionary War, okay? And that cannonball now, Elizabeth Betzleki gave as a gift to the Westchester Historical Society, and it relies, resides there. I just want to make a comment about the area, okay? As we all know, this is on the White Plains Post Road, Route twenty-two. And that road actually runs, as you know, from Mount Vernon to the Canadian border. And my guess is, although there are historians here that know more, a lot more about it than me, that that was probably developed as an Indian trail, and then in the eighteen hundreds, that was a stagecoach trail, okay? So if you picture it, you had stagecoaches going up and down twenty-two. In my opinion, this is a beautiful historic home, okay? And the proposed dwelling might be considered a mansion in Levittown, but I don't think in Bronxville, okay? So I think this is something that we should look at, try and preserve. Uh, I had the opportunity to speak last Wednesday before the planning board, and the question was raised, since a large section of this property lies in Tuckahoe, what do they say about it? So on Monday night, I was able to speak before the board in Tuckahoe, to the mayor and the, and the new vice mayor, deputy mayor of Tuckahoe, and the members of the board of trustees. I told them ahead of time that I would be speaking, and I note that they wrote the information down. So I made them aware that there's a proposal to demolish this. And I'll finish up by saying, and it's been eloquently said by the speaker before me, this is actually a gateway area, okay? So this is a gateway area to both Tuckahoe and to Bronxville. And you look Catty Corner across from this house, it's the underhill of the Stein Mansion, the, now the Concordia Conservatory, okay? And these are stately houses. I've known personally the last three presidents of Concordia. And by memory, I think that property, the thirty-three acres of the Concordia property, was purchased by now Iona University about two years ago, more or less. And I lived there, and up till a year before that, there were, it was used, there were residents, it was used. And I know that they, they met the standards for having that as a residency, meaning they had to keep it up to the standard of safety for students. So with that, I'll pass.
Thank you so much. Okay. Would anyone else from the public like to, uh, speak? Please.
Good evening. My name's Lee Lefkowitz, I'm an attorney for the applicant.
Yeah.
Um, I'm from the law firm Zarin &amp; Seid, that's, nice to meet you all. Um, I wanted to respond to a couple of the comments that were made, um, in particular, really focused on the law, your code, as well as, um, the assertions that have been made regarding the historic nature of the property. So we're here for site plan review on an as-of-right, single-family home. So in terms of the historic nature of this building and any impact that may have, that's really outside the ambit of your board, respectfully, when it comes to the review of a single-family home for site plan review. Unlike in Tuckahoe, where there is a historic preservation law, there is no historic preservation law in Bronxville. Now, one of your criteria, it does reference, um, historical architectural and landmark structures.
We'll get to that.
It, it, it turns out that this particular property, um, is not listed on the National Register of Historic Places, which elsewhere in your code is what defines a historic structure. So for purposes of this structure, there's no reason to consider it a historic structure. Nor even if it were, would that permit your board to sort of totally preclude a demolition and a rebuild of an as-of-right, single-family home? Furthermore, when it comes to what makes a structure historic, even for the purposes of it, of a historic preservation law, like exists in Tuckahoe, um, like exists in other municipalities, which utilize the National Register of Historic Places to ascertain what constitutes a single-family home. It's not about whether the building is old. Um, this building is old, there's no question about that. It's about how has the building been used since it was built? Um, does it have cultural significance? Um, what I heard a lot of was that this building is from a period, um, not that necessarily a particular event or historic occurrence happened there, which is how similar laws have been used in Tuckahoe. So there's really no basis, even if there were such law here in Bronxville, to characterize this as a historic home or use that as a basis to, um, preclude demolition and rebuild. Really, the focus here should be on, um, ensuring that this is on guide rails for a home that is in keeping with the character of the community and the neighborhood, and that's what we've been trying to do here. I want to talk a little bit about the fact that it's on a split lot, um, partially in Tuckahoe. I personally spoke to the attorney for Tuckahoe, um, for the village of Tuckahoe concerning this property, who advised me personally that Tuckahoe has no interest in utilizing its historic preservation law on this property. This property. law on this property. This property would not go before the Tuckahoe Planning Board. They do not require site plan review of demolition or rebuild of single-family homes. It would only go before the building inspector, and this property requires no, this rebuild requires no variances. So as your building inspector indicated, the building inspector in, 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 in Tuckahoe would be solely focused on that. I will note in closing, unlike other properties that have been deemed historic, there's been a lot of changes to this property over the years. There's been additions. The interior is facing structural issues like sagging floors and water damage. It was used as a college dorm for a long time. Typically, the historic properties that I deal with as an attorney have been cared for more than that over the years, and have been treated like historic properties over the years, not treated literally like a college dorm. So the object here is to replace this home with something that's more sightly, more in keeping with the community, more in keeping with the other homes, and that can actually be used rather than, than its vacant stature that it's been for the past several years. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that your board may have.
Are you saying that if we looked at the standards and decided this was a historical structure, that that could be successfully challenged?
So if you did, it's a fair question. Chapter one fifty-six dash two of your code is the closest we can come to finding definitions in your code for historic structure. So if you go to that provision...
Yeah, but Paul, before we get to that provision, the relevant provision, I think, for us is in three ten dash thirty, which says, "To prevent the unnecessary destruction or blighting of the village's landscape or achieved man-made environment, particular consideration shall be given to the following insofar as practical." And item D, Jim, that you were alluding to, is preservation protection of historical, archaeological, and landmark areas and structures. So historical is within our purview. So I know counsel for the owner will be, you know, discussing with us what they view as our purview, but in the end, we'll be discussing that with our counsel, in addition to getting your advice. Sorry, go ahead, Jim.
No, I'd like to see the cross-reference.
Yeah, absolutely. But, but that code provision that you pointed out, Mr. Chair, is important. Historical structure. So what I was pointing to is the definition in your code of historic structure, which appears in section one fifty-six dash two. Now, this is a separate section, but it's the only...
Right, because I don't see a definition in this section.
Well, there's no definition in that section. What that section is saying is that one of the criteria that you may consider is the preservation and protection of historic structures.
Right.
So we need to figure out what is a historic structure.
Mm-hmm.
If we go to one fifty-two dash, one fifty-six dash two...
Can you get to that, Paul?
It, uh, yeah, right. So this is, this is a section entitled Flood Damage Prevention.
Yeah, he's there.
It, it's, there's a definite, a section called Word Usage and Definitions.
Yeah.
So you can scroll down to H.
Yeah.
So this is a historic structure. This, this is, in your code, the closest we can get to finding a definition of historic structure. Listed on the National Register of Historic Places, and some other definitions that neither apply. The only one you'd have a chance at is, is number one, this is neither listed on the National Register, this property is neither listed on the National Register of Historic Places, nor is it even listed as eligible on the National Register.
Could you go to the introduction to this, to the beginning of the word, the section?
Yeah. So I see where you're going with that, so let me, let me cut it off right now. There's no question that this is in a section called Flood Damage.
No, understood.
So I'm not asserting that this is squarely on point. I'm pointing to it because this is the closest we come in your code to defining what a historic...
In a separate section, I think we understand.
Correct. And what I'll say is that other municipalities, every municipality, lest they have a historic preservation law, will refer to the National Register of Historic Places to determine what is a historic structure, and this is not listed there.
To where you were before, number four, you were saying one is the closest...
Number what?
Number, where you were before.
Under H.
Under H.
And, and... Right, there's a definition of historic structures in a different section of the code.
Yeah, so I, I can read it.
Is it listed in, with the Bronxville? There it is, number four.
Number four.
Individually listed, is it honor, do we have a local inventory to the speaker before?
So that, the speaker before...
The historian or the...
Marilyn, do you know? Do you know if this building appears on a local list of historic structures?
We did collect it, put it in that book because we thought it was a centennial history. So that's why it appeared in the book. We did building, it's urban, just a centennial history. I happen to have been on the board of the National Trust of Historic Preservation, and I do know there are two ways you can get it. We would not drive, we would buy it, and it's kind of like that.
Well...
I think Marilyn, all, all we'll say to you tonight is, very substantive issues have been raised on each side of this, and I think it's unlikely that any of this will be resolved tonight. I can't speak for my fellow board members, but I think that's likely.
Let me try to short-circuit it a little bit. So that provision is individually listed on a local inventory of historic places in communities with historic preservation programs. So the fact that there may be a private nonprofit out there that, that keeps track of historic places in a community is not the same as a community with a historic preservation program, which Bronxville doesn't have.
Understood, but it remains the fact that this is in a separate section, and we'll need to, you know, review with experts on our side what the proper definition is for the, the trustees adopted a new section of the code two years ago, and that's the reason you're here tonight. And before that, the approach to demolition of buildings was very different. And so, you know, it's, it's a little difficult, given that they made the effort, you know, for that change to be made two years ago, and put a lot of the time and thought into doing it, for you to come in here tonight and say we have no jurisdiction over that. But we'll review that with the experts on our side and determine that.
That, that's fine. You should, I certainly encourage you to consult your attorneys. I would expect that my interpretation of the code wouldn't differ from theirs. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions?
That was the only one I had.
Okay. All right, is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Okay, so seeing none, let's close the public hearing. Thanks to everybody who came up and spoke. I think that was very helpful. I think we'll open it up for, did, did you want to come back? You're welcome to come back if you, if you'd like. Okay, we may have questions for you as we have. Jim, did you want to start with a question? I just had an opening remark before we start.
Please, go ahead.
Our discussion, which is, you know, having given this a lot of consideration, you know, before the meeting, it, it's not surprising that, you know, very interesting and substantive issues have been raised by both the folks who have spoken publicly and by the applicant. And I think there's a lot we need to learn in terms of the history of the property, in terms of the legal standards for considering something like this. And I think the reality is, at this meeting, we're not sufficiently educated on all those points. And so other board members may see it otherwise, but I think it, you know, would make sense, at least from my perspective, for us to recognize that fact, and, you know, put this over to the next meeting, in, in which case we can be, you know, much more prepared to dive into all these questions in more depth. But with that, I'd like to throw it open to the, to the group.
I guess one question I had is, I think the, the status of the landscape plans?
So we are, the landscape architect is currently working on a landscape plan, so it's going to take a little bit of time for him to do a complete landscape plan to show how we're treating, one, the front, flowering beds and whatnot, and then, two, White Plains Road, with its, you know, screening and mature trees and planting. Obviously, no, you know, trees are being proposed, you know, to be removed within this project. And there is very bare, you know, landscaping there. It's pretty, you know, nothing really to be salvaged, I guess you would say, as far as landscaping goes, but yeah.
And in your consideration of the structure that you're proposing versus the existing structure, was, is it, would be more or less expensive to rehab the existing property?
And if you'd please identify yourself, thanks.
Members, Mr. Goldman, I'm the, I'm the owner of the house. My name's Greg Holcomb. Let me attempt to set the, the table for you, if I may, in terms of what I'm dealing with here. This, this was one of a number of properties that Concordia wanted to dispose of prior to the sale to Iona. All the properties were the same in that they were chopped up quite a bit. There's enough urinals and stalls and toilets in two oh five house to outfit a small baseball stadium. There's no kitchen, there's no CO. This was a non, because it was not owned by a not-for-profit, they didn't pay taxes. So now, all of a sudden, this thing's on the tax rolls. There's no CO. I can't rent it. It's not saleable, and I'm getting banged pretty good with the taxes and the carrying costs on it, number one, which is somewhat secondary. The reality is, because of the interior, what I would call destruction to this house, it's not salvageable. So again, I certainly appreciate and respect the challenge that you all have, but the, the reality is, at the end of the day, this is an economic hardship to try to rehab the house as it is. I'm not in the business of just demolishing equity. If, if a house can be saved, if the, if the bones are, if you will, are solid, you're thrilled to save it, you're happy to save it. But because this thing's been chopped up and used as a dorm for multiple kids, it wasn't saved, and we couldn't save the house at two twenty-five either, two twenty-five White Plains Road, two, two houses up. Sir.
Yes, okay, that's the one I was going to ask you about.
So...
That's in Tuckahoe, though, correct, that didn't...
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Now, it was our intent initially. I am, I, I, I live in the community. I appreciate and understand what you all are dealing with. It was my initial intent, because of the size of the lot, to build two smaller houses, but that would have required a variance. And you can assume that over the last year and a half-ish, the, the, the subtle message was passed on that two houses wouldn't fly there, and the variance wouldn't fly. Don't waste your time. So now I'm stuck with essentially what is a white elephant. I grew up in Annapolis, Maryland. I went to school in Annapolis, Maryland. I understand and appreciate historic architecture. I understand copper, brick, colonial era, all the other attributes and accoutrements relating to historic architecture. Just because people like a Victorian house, there aren't any Victorian houses within that, that, that general radius. Somebody may like a Victorian house. I don't like Victorian houses. I own the property, and I would intend to build something that would be in keeping with the neighborhood as we've proposed. Certainly appreciate and respect your opinion, happy to make modifications, one and if appropriate, but the house unto itself isn't salvageable. So at the end of the day, speaking frankly and in a friendly manner, I'm going to end up in the same place. It's just a matter of, am I going to pay taxes on the thing for the next year, two years, while we're working through these issues that end up at the same, in, in the same place? And I'm just being totally frank with you. I've been through this before. I've got another house down the street with the same problem, which was unanticipated.
The same problem being?
The, the, the ward house where, where there was historic designation.
It's in Tuckahoe, so...
Tuckahoe, yes, sir. Down, down, down the street on the corner.
The two villages overlapping here.
But the analogy is, at the end of the day, the house isn't salvageable. It's just not salvageable. So it becomes an economic hardship, and the house won't be there. It's just that simple. Now, it may be a historic site, and we may memorialize and recognize the historic attributes of the site. House isn't salvageable, can't be lived in, and, and that's, that's the position that I'm stuck in, to be frank with you. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions, happy to help you, not looking to be confrontational, but I was trying to keep this thing from running off the rails, if you will, relative to, you know, I can't demo the interior of the house to see what I'm dealing with. Can't get a permit for that. Can't get a permit to demo it. So I just sit here and pay taxes to our, to our good assessor.
So it's your view that it isn't practical to salvage the existing structure, basically rebuilding the inside?
No, sir, because the interior would require essentially a gut job down to the, down to the studs.
Yep.
I mean, like I said, there's literally no kitchen. These were kids living out of, out of microwaves and crockpots, as we all did longer than I care to remember ago.
And you don't, you don't think a renovated house that's eligible for the Bronxville schools would, would command interest?
It's not, it's not, again, it's, 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 it's a function of economics and viability relative to the economics. It's not, it's not, will it sell with the schools? I guarantee you it'll sell with the schools. That was the, uh, out of the package, if you will, that was the most desirable of the package. Everything else was less, less, less attractive, if you will, relative to the totality of what was offered.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that's really, that's really it in a nutshell.
So I asked a question to, I think, the architect earlier. Is the house unlivable condemned, or are there structural issues that cannot be resolved? I, I just want to be very clear.
For me, for me, for me to make that assessment, you would literally have to demo it down to the walls, down to the studs, and, and see what the, what the, what the structural condition of the property is. But based on what I'm looking at to date, which is, by the way, this is, this is consistent among all the Concordia properties. They just, they just chopped them up, stuck fire escapes in them, stuck a bunch of bathrooms in them, and they ran bunks, and it was like, uh, uh, houses from hell. I don't even know how the fire commissioner or the, or the health department allowed what went on in these houses. But it is what it is, and, and that's kids.
You said you could not get a permit to do some of that interior work? Why can't you get a permit for that, other than...
We weren't able to, to get a building permit at the time, as requested for the demo.
Just to demolish the interior?
Interior, correct, yes, sir.
Okay, that sounds like a follow-up item. Okay.
But at this point, we're, in some respects, past the point where we're going to, we're going to, we're going to demo the entire interior of the structure.
Any other questions for Mr. Holcomb?
Greg.
Greg. We'll go on first names here. Okay. Look, thank you for, for stepping up. Please, go ahead.
I'm still Edward Powers, Six McKinley, okay? Just a couple of comments, if I may. And I go, no, this, these houses are now are in Tuckahoe, so it's not really your jurisdiction. But there is a house on the corner of McKinley and twenty-two, and that house was used as a dormitory by Concordia. The house was purchased by the former president, V. G. George, at Concordia, okay? And his daughter lives there, and they did a beautiful restoration job on the house. I've been in the house, and they, it's restored to its original magnificent. The same for the house next door to it, which was also a dormitory, and that's been restored. With all due respect to what Mr. Holcomb said, I'm going to quondry to understand how, three-plus years ago, two oh five, White Plains Road, could have been used as a dormitory by college students where it's up to code. We're talking about a code that's...
Oh, farther from the mic, apparently.
We're talking about a code that's... You're talking about students. Three years could have gone to such...
Thank you. On some of this, I think it goes to the point I was trying to make. I, I think a number of us are speculating about a number of aspects here, and I think we're all going to want to learn more, so we can, you know, come to the right and consider decision here. But why don't we give the board members a chance to, you know, say what they think about, you know, the discussion and potential next steps here?
Did you give any consideration to keeping the facade the way it is and building back that direction, so you keep the pretty facade on twenty-two, but recognizing that maybe past the pillars, everything needs to be, be done? Was that part of your, your thinking at all?
Yeah, so, I mean, overall, in the initial design, the, really the economical resale of houses right now for sale for a while, and it won't sell as it is right now. So that's sort of kind of where we got...
Meaning it's back on the market right now?
Yes, yeah. Yes, yeah. And it's been on the market for a while, and it will not sell. So it's more, you know, what you're starting to see, like you see from that picture there, that new house that's being constructed up the street a little, what's desired by these new homeowners, and, you know, obviously, people looking to move into the neighborhood is more sort of what we are constructing, what is sold in the area a lot more realistically.
What did you say, that the house we're talking about is on the market again? What was the question? The house that you're just talking about?
Yes.
Yes.
What Paul pulled up was the Rose State List, now, yes.
I think, Ms. Myers, the, after dealing with this for 18 to 24 months, I can't tell you exactly, the challenges of executing a project within some municipalities makes you question whether or not there's an ROI for the time and the brain damage associated with that project. I think that's obtuse enough for you to grasp what I'm attempting to say. So the thought was, perhaps, if there was somebody that had a labor of love, as there are some people, that want a, quote, "historic-like" house, and they wanna buy it, it's a great value, you've got the great schools, you've got the great people, feel free. But the economic reality is, everybody claims that the historic folks that I appreciate, everybody wants to pony up until it's time to pony up, and then nobody has any money. Went through this before. We were gonna get, you know, 100 like-minded people to X kick in, X thousand dollars, and we were all gonna buy, you know, a Y house. Never materialized when it came to put up the money. So I've been through this drill a couple times. It's a project. I have people that I have to keep busy, I have people that I have to keep employed. I enjoy doing the work. I only do work within spitting distance from my house, which is four minutes from here. So, if somebody wanted it, there's an opportunity to take it, but trust me, nobody's called. Because of the ROI. People that would use it for themselves, people that could get a great value, people that could put, you know, X dollars into it, X dollars is a lot of money to save it as-is, and most people don't wanna build their own house. If they're moving, they wanna move into their own house. Frankly, although, you know, you appreciate Victorian architecture if you're at Disney World at the Grand Floridian, that's not what sells around here, and White Plains Road doesn't sell. So those are the nuances of what I'm trying to deal with from a business perspective. I understand and appreciate the emotional challenges that you all have. I understand and appreciate the other associated challenges that you all have relative to dealing with this, but you can understand why I am where I am today and why we're here. So I think that answered your question.
Thank you.
Okay, maybe we'll go back to the discussion. Some of us haven't had a chance to... Go ahead.
Just to fall back really quickly on that, again, it was also to do with the site planning was a, you know, major condition. So when the house, say, does stay with the facade facing 22, then obviously, today's buyers, okay, I want, you know, garages, and now where do we stick these garages with the house facing 22? Do we put it, you know, on the back? Then they literally, I mean, it's a huge lot, so the ideal selling point of this lot is to have a yard to be able to use and occupy. So when garages sort of get stuck on Hobart Street, now, all of a sudden, this house is sort of a neck, you know, 'cause it's not, you know, it's sort of more of a rectangle. So now, when you stick garages there, the house becomes sort of like the shotgun house, where your garages are facing Hobart, the front elevation is there, and now you have this narrow strip on the right side, and the rear of the home doesn't really end up being as much desirable, because you're sort of walking down this narrow strip, and you have sort of three, you know, the three garages on the right-hand side. Now you have your modern flow plan, and you can go right out to the left-side yard and rear yard. That's the most, you know, circulation-wise of the home, the most ideal use of the actual lot itself. That was really...
Okay. Other discussion before we get to a potential motion here.
Paul, the coordination between Tuckahoe and Bronxville, is our power to approve the whole project or just the portion in Bronxville?
The whole.
Sounded like Greg had something he wanted to say, too, if that's okay.
I may try to save Paul some brain damage on this, because he's somewhat new, and I've already dealt with this prior. Typically, what happens is that the two municipalities get together with the builder, and they determine what I will call the, quote, "lead agency." So then, Tuckahoe says, "We'll handle it." Bronxville says, "We'll handle it, and we're done." There's no, you don't deal with both municipalities. There's no, just, the lead agency inspects it, the lead agency oversees it, the lead agency collects the fees. So what happened recently was that a house was constructed, Bronxville ceded the lead agency status to another municipality, the house was constructed, the house was sold, a CO was obviously issued, and then one day, some folks in a village with which you are associated, didn't have any knowledge or recollection of the project, didn't collect a building permit fee, were questioning the taxes relative to the associated project. So, my understanding, I'm not within your circle, but my understanding is Bronxville no longer recognizes the, quote, "lead agency" concept, and it's possible, I'm not speaking for anybody, 'cause I'm, again, I'm tertiary. You guys are primary, I'm not even tertiary. My understanding is Bronxville chose not to work with the lead agency concept, and that's why I have the time and the expense of two different approvals. However, in a perfect world, this isn't that difficult, because there's no variance requested. I don't wanna be presumptuous and say this is as of right, Mr. Chairman. I'm not attempting to say that, but I'm saying, as of, you know, based on your code, a 6,000-square-foot house could have been proposed here. It's not the intent. I understand and appreciate that you all are trying to minimize stupidity. I'm attempting to do my best to not participate or advance anything that constitutes stupidity. I thought this was a reasonable proposal, based upon what could be done on the site, and frankly, what most other people would have proposed for the site. We didn't go for, go big and cut it back. We went for what we thought was appropriate, based on the character and the sizing in the neighborhood. And that's it in a nutshell.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion before we get to potential?
Look, I, wait, is this for questions to the public or our own discussion now?
We're having our own discussion now. Let's close the public meeting. Thank you.
Okay. I think there's, there's a lot of vectors that we're trying to triangulate here. I can think of three off the top. One is the design of the existing house. I think there are some elements that are in keeping with the neighborhood. I think there are some elements that are unique. One is the number of garage portals. Most on that street in most of Bronxville is, at most, two, if not one or zero. I think three is unique.
No.
I think it's...
There's a number of three in Bronxville.
Oh, okay. I think in that area is unique, though.
Yeah, Hobart doesn't have many.
It's a larger footprint.
Right. And the reorientation of the home is a drastic change. I think most of the homes, when you're driving along White Plains Road, you see a large facade. And so, these are some of the elements that I think about that we're changing on the home. Then there is the historical aspect of it, which I do, we will discuss with council on our remit, but I think part of the responsibility of this planning board is, in the site application, to take some of that into consideration. And then the third vector, which is also tough, is the neighbors in that area have been dealing with a vacated, dilapidated house for three, maybe four years. And the question for them, for our planning purposes, is at what length of time do we say, okay, you've given it a chance to preserve it in another way, and it is not adding value, it's diluting value in the neighborhood, the impact on the other neighbors, and there needs to be a new use for it? Or do we say, this home needs to be given more time to find a renovation? And I think those are three vectors I'm trying to triangulate. I think, to your point, Chairman, getting more data on the historical nature of the home would be helpful. I think getting a better understanding of the existing state of the home, I understand there are complications, but understanding the permitting, if we, if I were to understand if the home is condemned, for example, I think that would be a relevant data point. So, as I ask, think about follow-ups. These are some of the things, in addition to the landscape plan that we've already asked for, is a set of comprehensive information I would need to fully evaluate this application.
That's very well put. Would anyone like to add anything before we think about a motion here?
I would say, you're right about the change in the orientation of the house, but the houses on White Plains Road that are on corners face not, you know, roads other than White Plains. So, any homeowner putting a house up on White Plains Road after it became a thoroughfare, they've opted to face the side street. So, that's gonna negatively impact the value of the property, even if you were able to keep the orientation there.
Yeah, though, in fairness, there are homes that present more of a facing facade, two roads, corner houses, I've seen, you know, kind of have forward faces on both sides, depending on how you do it. So, we're not going to get into architecting here. I'm just saying there are multiple solutions to...
No, I think we are. I mean, I think the problem is...
Not at this meeting, is what I'm saying. We may not get to that.
Well, I mean, I think we've been, I think the issue before us is whether the existing architecture is something we should preserve, or whether the site ought to be built in a way that is a more modern architectural style. By modern, I don't necessarily mean the style, I mean, in terms of the preferences of homeowners. And I think it's, I think Bronxville does have many, many examples of beautiful historic homes. I love what you folks have done to highlight that. And I think there's a lot of support for preserving that. Unfortunately, that didn't seem to include Iona College, because the damage done to this house really ups the stakes in terms of trying to preserve it, it sounds like. I mean, not trying to make any economic findings, but it does seem like nobody wants this house for a million and a half dollars. And if you look at houses in Bronxville that go for a million and a half, their size and the size of the lot, they're not this big, and they're not on that kind of property.
That's fair.
And so, I think the damage, in many respects, has been done. I'm very happy that, is it called Stein Hall, the one we've been looking at across the street? The conservatory? That's beautiful, and that has been preserved, and I'm very happy about that. It just seems to me that asking a private individual to preserve something in an uneconomic manner, and I'm making a leap of, you know, a conclusion here, but it seems a reasonable one, I'm not convinced that if we were going to start preserving houses in Bronxville, that this would be very high on my list. Having read the book, there are hundreds of others that fall into that category, and maybe we ought to think about having some sort of more formal historic designation process in Bronxville. And then, I'm sure you've thought about that, but it would be useful to hear more on that at, you know, at some point.
And the trustees, I think, are the ones who would have, you know, the review authority on that one.
Sure, of course.
Anyone else?
So, Michael, if we go, you know, we leave tonight, and we make a motion, and the Bronxville lawyers, I guess, the question is, is there some sort of historic landmark designation or something? Which seems that maybe there's not, but, but, once they come back with their, let's just say that there's not, then it comes back to us again, because really, what we're just talking about is, is whether or not we approve the demolition, right? All this other stuff is...
It's, well, it's a two-parter.
And the site plan.
Because it's, we have review authority over both the demolition and the site plan, and odds are, if we get to the point where we approve the demolition, we'll be digging a lot more deeply into the site plan. I just feel like we weren't ready tonight to do that. So I think there's going to be another bite at the apple on the site plan. But if we table this now, we'll come into the next meeting with, I think, a much greater understanding of what our authority is and isn't with regard to the historic preservation aspects here. And I think that it's really important to get that right.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we, I would like to have our counsel's interpretation. As far as the plan, I like the plan, I think.
Agreed.
The orientation is good. I think you're keeping within the footprint. I like it very much. I just don't know enough about the other things that we all brought up with your lawyer and our lawyers. I want our lawyers to, counsel to tell us a little bit more, so we have, so we get that straight, and then we can get into, do we like the house and the site plan?
Yeah, I think we know what we don't know. And that's what we want to work on.
I do like the plan.
So, am I getting the sense that the members think there is, that this is a historic structure worth preserving?
I guess what I would say is, I think it's a historic structure worth learning more about. I think there are things we still don't know.
And what, what are those, what are the questions you would need answered?
I don't think we even know tonight what those questions are. What some boards have done in this circumstance is, in addition to speaking to council, they've spoken to someone who's an expert in historic preservation, to get their perspective on whether or not this is, you know, sufficiently unusual in a way that we may not know. I don't know whether we'll go in that direction or not, but it's certainly not something that any of us here at the table are experts in.
So you would be interested in things like how the house was used, whether notable people lived in it, who the architect was?
Whether there's something notable, yes, about the architecture, about the sighting, about the history. And it may be that there's none of that, but I think, as we sit here, we don't know. What I know is what I saw in the wonderful book that was put together, and that's a layman's understanding, not a professional's understanding.
There's just been so many great things that have been said. I agree with a lot of the discussion, so I guess the idea would be to get the legal counsel and then tell us what our role could be in saying this is a historical house and that we would want to preserve it. But I feel for the owner of the house who bought it, and it wasn't a historical house, so when you buy a piece of property in the United States and there's no historical, you know, designation, they should be able to do what they want with the house within the legal structure of the village and the county that they purchased it in. So, there's a lot, you know, to consider, and I appreciate, you know, the situation that you're in from an economic standpoint and wanting to move forward, and I appreciate the historical significance of the house, but none of us really know how the inside is, and it's great to save it, but, you know, it is on the market, and there's no indication that anybody wants to purchase it. So, it is a beautiful community, and I think we do need to discuss a little bit more about the landscaping and what the final site plan would look like, but I do think, you know, it is, you know, a nice piece of property that their design looks nice. I do have a question about maybe the three garages, and to see what the landscaping would look like, but I think, you know, this is a tough situation, and I feel for, you know, the builder, because this is really tough to be trying to, you know, move forward with your business and having all these, you know, blocks along the way.
Yeah, in terms of timing, I think the goal would be to put this over to the next meeting, and, you know, that's in one month, and see what we can achieve at that time. Would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
So, sorry, will we create a...
I think anyone but you can, unfortunately, 'cause you're an alternate tonight. Sorry about that.
So... So, would we develop a action items list of deliverables that we would need to be presented to convene at the next meeting to give a decision? Because I don't want to say, "We're going to deal this, we're going to deal this at the next meeting, and then, if we haven't been clear on the materials we need," and then, they get pushed again. So, I think if we can agree on materials by a certain time that we can review, then we can all come to assess it appropriately.
Well, I think it circles back to some of the points you were making, which is, I think, between here and the next meeting, we want to learn more about the history of the house. I think we would need to learn more about the legal authority of this board, and I think we want to further review and discuss the site plan.
And how are we going to get there?
Well, if our chairman was here today, since I'm acting as chairman, but Larry Brink is not here today, I think he'd be able to speak more eloquently on how we work in concert with Paul and with Village to get some of these aspects executed. But I think the truth is, we're going to need to have Larry back to have that discussion. He's had more of the interaction with the Village in terms of how you go through working with historical folks, if that's what you're going to do, how we interact with council, et cetera. He's done more of that, and so, I don't want to speak for him.
So, you're saying Larry's institutional memory may be such that he knows that we've confronted a historic preservation issue before, and he would know the protocol?
He certainly knows more than anyone else who's here at the table.
Okay. And I guess the second question is, leaving aside the gathering more information about the house, which I doubt there's much in Village government where anyone has a knowledge of that, right? Would you, anybody in this building that would...
We do have the historian here. I don't know if you'd want to comment on what records are available, but... Do you want to come to the mic?
See the resources we have?
Thank you very much. I'm not aware of records that would be responsive to the types of questions you're asking. They would be more likely to be in the Village archives, rather than in the holdings of the History Center. I don't, I'm here tonight primarily to learn about this sort of business. I hesitate to offer very much advice. I, I, my background is as an archivist and as an historian, and I've, I've not been involved in historic preservation of this kind before, so I'm trying to learn. But I think that, without question, Bronxville will be changed if you approve the demolition of this house. And, and that's not to say that you, you would approve the demolition thinking that, that, that change would be unduly harmful. But it will be changed. It's a gracious-looking old structure. I, I, when I drive down the road or walk down the road, bite down the road, I look at it, and I'm thinking, "Well, that's, that's an attractive old house." It gives a, a certain feeling. It, it contributes to a certain feeling in the Village of Bronxville. And to remove that and put a modern house with three garages facing the main road that most people are going to see, that will change the Village. And one of the things that I learn over at the History Center every day is the past is, is very fragile. Not much of it ever survives. Most of it's all gone. Life changes. Everything is, is changed. But, some of it does survive, and I value it. I think we all value some things that come to us from the past. And just the feeling that there is some continuity in the development of, of our society, and it doesn't just completely begin anew with each, each year or each decade, that we have some of the past in our lives to, to give us a sense of who we are. So, I hope that's helpful, but...
Thank you very much.
Sure.
And the questions that we want to ask the Village Council, do we want an interpretation of our standards as they relate to historic structures, or does the question go beyond that?
I think we don't even know all the questions that we want to ask, because my guess is the questions that we have will lead to other questions. Council for, you know, the owner has raised the question of whether language in one section impacts another section. I don't think we're equipped to address that. So, there's not just the language in that section, but how is that to be interpreted? And, you know, where does our authority start, and where does that authority end? And have there been other issues of this kind? The owner was alluding to another issue that's happening in another jurisdiction, and, you know, what can we learn from those other disputes? So, I think the list is long of what we don't know. But I'm hopeful that by the time we have our next meeting, we'll have the answers to all those questions.
I, I would propose an ask of each of the various stakeholders to, to have prepared for our next meeting. I think for the board, we should ask our legal counsel what the definition of historical structure is, and whether a definition in a separate chapter that says it is only pertaining to that chapter is relevant to a separate chapter. And I'd like to understand why a internal demolition permit was denied, as was articulated. That's on our side. I would invite the Historical Society to provide a specific write-up on that property. I under, I, all the information you provided tonight was helpful. It was verbal, it's recorded. But I think a comprehensive written memo with the relevant information that we can objectively look at, you know, with a deadline of two weeks before the meeting, that we can review, which is in a month.
Next meeting's in a month.
But, that is, well, an appropriate amount of time. We need at least a week. And I would ask the developer categorically, what are the deficiencies in the home that make it unrestorable, and whether it is condemned in its current state? Whether it's, there are structural issues, there is, you've mentioned no kitchen, but a real understanding of the status of the home. I haven't been in there to evaluate it, but to understand fully, factually, the state of the home, why it cannot be restored right now. And those would be the data points that I think we can have the real thorough conversation on.
No, I think some of those we can put in a motion, and I don't know, some of them we can't. We can't direct the Historical Conservancy to do things within...
We can request members of the public to make submissions.
We can make a request. Similarly, we can request that the homeowner, next time, be prepared to address that in more depth. But in the end, we can only control what, what we do.
How about a motion that says, "We will defer consideration of this application until the next meeting, subject to the preparation and presentation of a landscaping plan," which I understand is underway. Secondly, "We would invite members of the pub, public to submit any information that they would like to submit regarding the historical status, if any, of the property at 205 White Plains Road." "We would ask the developer to submit arguments, positions, information about the challenging economics of restoring and remarketing the existing structure." And finally, "We will seek consultation, the chairman will seek consultation with Village Council about our ability to apply the standards in Section 301-26D." My eyes aren't good enough.
It's, the main one is really 31030.
Oh, 31030, you're right.
31030 is the...
Okay, 31030...
Is up for discussion. Yeah. Lot of parentheses there.
Yeah. And then, how that gets communicated to us, I guess, we'll probably receive an email from the chairman or something before the next meeting. Because we can't meet before we meet.
Right. Sunshine Law, we won't be meeting until then, but our chairman can have further discussions and can educate us at that time, and perhaps council will be present at the next meeting. We don't know, and that often can be helpful in terms of letting the pros talk to the pros about how to resolve things. We'll see.
Right. Probably the...
So, Christine, did you have any of that, or most of that? Okay. Okay. So, I'm going to take that as a motion.
So moves.
Does someone want to second that? Albert, thank you. Any, any discussion on the motion before we have a vote?
Well said.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. The next meeting of the Planning Board will be May 10th, and we expect to see you there.
Thank you to everyone.